Get started. This is the Pennington County Planning Commission. Roll call. Please, Jerry, note that Commissioners Coleman and McCollum are not here today. And Commissioner Busscaroot is representing the county board. I am one. Approval of the September fourteenth minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look through those? Are there any corrections or additions?
I'd move acceptance of the meeting minutes as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the September fourteenth minutes as written. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. The consent calendar is part of the agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. Would any planning commissioner like to remove any item from the consent calendar? No? Staff?
No ma'am.
Okay. Would you read the consent calendar items into the record, please, PJ?
PJ Conover, Pennington County Planning Director. Item number three, conditional use permit review 1018 for Tom Bodensteiner to review a golf driving range in limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1018 with ten conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review 1210 for Tom Bodensteiner to review a portable sawmill to process bug wood trees in limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1210 with applicant's concurrence. Item five, conditional use permit 1316 for Larry Tuber to review a guest house in a limited agriculture district, suburban residential district. In accordance with section 206, staff recommends to continue the review of CUP 1316 to the October 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item six, conditional use permit review 1318 for Rochford Community Club, Anna Berstle- Berstleon, excuse me, as the agent to allow a community center in suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1318 with nine conditions. Item seven, Gary Shower, conditional use permit 1320. Jim Peterson is the agent to review vacation home rental in general agriculture district. Staff recommends to revoke conditional use permit 1320 with the applicant's concurrence. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1321 for Aaron Olson to allow for vacation home rental in suburban residential district. Staff recommends the approval of the extension of CUP 1321 with eight conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit 1527 for Carol Duncan to bring into compliance an existing bed and breakfast to include special events and to allow the sale of wine and beer in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1527 to the October 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item 10, suburban subdivision regulation variance 1517 for Rodney Alexander, Renton and Associates, as the agent to waive plating requirements in order to create lots one and two of Tin City Load MS 2504. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance 1517 with three conditions. Item 11, rezone 1509 and comprehensive plan amendment 1509. Rodney Alexander, Renton and Associates, as the agent to review 7.615, excuse me, to rezone 7.615 acres from general agriculture district to low-density residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from general agriculture district to low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of rezone 1509 and Comprehensive Plan 1509. Item 12, minor plat 1522 and subdivision regulation variance 1511 for Greg and Cynthia Andrew, Fisk Land Surveying, as the agent to create lot 6A and 6B, block two of Rolling Hills Estates, and to waive plating requirements. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance 1511 and approval of minor plat 1522 with nine conditions.
Thank you, PJ.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have any of these items pulled for further discussion? If not, chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as written. Items one through twelve, I'm sorry, three through twelve. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Onto item 13. Thank you.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor. Item 13 is for Rushmore Shadows Resort and is to bring into compliance an existing recreational resort and to allow for the addition of 45 RV sites to the subject property. Now wait till this gets down so we can... So everyone can see. Okay. The property is located off of Highway 16. It is currently being utilized as a recreation resort. And here's a map of that property right now. Currently, they have a clubhouse, convenience store, office, various amenities that include playgrounds, basketball courts, horseshoe pits, swimming pool. So this was on the agenda last meeting and we, as staff, had decided that we were going to bring the whole thing into compliance since they were going to add the additional 45 sites. Let's see. So it's own highway service district and it consists of 45.56 acres for one of the lots, the northernmost lot. The southern lot consists of about 3.22 acres and it's vacant of any structures. Staff did a site visit and the property was in good condition. It was operating as a recreational resort. The interior roads were maintained and in good condition. So staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit to allow for a recreational resort and an additional 45 RV sites with 15 conditions. So is there any questions?
Okay. Thanks, Brittany. Are there any questions for staff? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address this agenda item? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Staff would entertain a motion for approval.
I'd move approval of conditional use permit 15-25 with the 15 conditions as recommended by staff.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit 1525 with 15 conditions as recommended by staff. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay. Item 14 is a construction permit 1516 for the same property, Rushmore Shadows Resort. This is for the mass grading and for utility installation and for the RV pad construction. Here's a site plan of that for the 45 sites. They plan on installing a sanitary sewer. We have been out on the property and looked at profile hole and I believe that the property owners are in the process of doing the percolation tests and they're going to install water main, storm sewer, and then they're going to do some asphalt surfacing and gravel pad for this. They have designed a retention pond in that northeast corner to handle any stormwater flows that would come off the site. Our drainage engineer has reviewed the plans as and is accept, they are acceptable to him. In addition, the property owners have met with Denny, our fire coordinator, and their fire mitigation plan is acceptable to him. So staff is recommending approval of construction permit 1516 with nine conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Brittany? No? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this item? Is there further discussion, anybody? If not, how about a motion?
I'd move that we approve conditional, construction permit 15-16 with nine conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve construction permit CP 15-16 with nine conditions. Is there further discussion? We were quiet today. Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Onto item fifteen.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 15 is conditional use permit 1526 to allow an existing accessory structure, a garage, and a new accessory structure, a pole barn, prior to a principal structure on a subject property. The applicant is Richard and Tammy Burton. This property is 35 acres. Currently, it is zoned low-density residential. Again, it's 35 acres. It's located in the Norris Peak Road District. Access is off of Geary Boulevard. It's at the very end of Geary via an existing 10-foot wide driveway. The lot currently contains a horse feeder that was built in 1993, a detached garage, and three sheds, which, due to the size of the sheds, do not require a building permit. The way this, this conditional use permit came about is on August 2nd, there was a removal permit approved to remove a 28-by-45 double-wide manufactured home from the subject property. It sat right here. So with removing that double-wide, there was now only accessory structures on the property, which creates a zoning violation, thus requiring this conditional use permit. So the applicants did apply for this conditional use permit on September 9th. And at that time, they indicated that they did also wish to build a 30-by-50 pole barn on the subject property along with the existing structures that are there. The only thing that came up while we were reviewing this conditional use permit is that this garage that was built on the property, we can't find a building permit for it. I did speak with the applicant on September 23rd regarding this. She, Ms. Burton, at that time, had stated that she believes the garage was built around the same time as this horse feeder, which would have been in 1993, but she has not been able to find proof of the year built. Staff researched all of the other building permits on the property. According to the Department of Equalization records, they show that this garage was built in 2003, but we have not been able to find a building permit. So that detached garage will need to be permitted as an existing structure. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Nothing significant came back. The applicants have not indicated that they wish to put living quarters in the pole barn. They have indicated that they plan to build another single-family residence on this property sometime next year and would be using the pole barn to store the building materials for building their house. So staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit 1526 with nine conditions.
Thank you, Cassie. Are there any questions for Cassie?
I guess, is there a window where, I mean, if they've removed the double-wide and basically going to replace it, you know, within a certain amount of time? I mean, it seems like they're going through that conditional use permit just for that small window. Or, you know, is there a window that staff uses as a guide where they wouldn't have to go through the conditional use process? Or any, any time is, even if it's a month between moving off a manufactured home, bringing in another manufactured home, does, do they still have to go through the conditional use process?
There are times in our office where we will do like a 90-day window. We'll have them sign a statement that says they have 90 days from time of removal to time of new single-family residence. But in this case, it sounds like it's probably going to be next year before they build their single-family residence. So that's why we're doing the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Cassie?
The applicant is in the audience, too, if you do have any questions.
Would the applicant like to say anything about this before we keep going?
I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Good morning. I'm Tammy Burton.
Hi, Tammy.
Hi.
I had one question. Are you going to build your new house on the, in the same spot as the place where the double-wide was removed?
Yes. It has the best view.
Ah, okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay, thanks. That was brief.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? If not, chair would entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve conditional use permit CU 15-26 with, I'm looking for the number of conditions?
Nine.
Nine conditions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit 1526 with nine conditions. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Item 16.
Item 16 is conditional use permit review CU 0734. Oops, sorry. To review a home occupation, a greenhouse to grow plants and produce in a suburban residential district. The applicant is James and Susan Norskoff. This property is off of Pioneer Drive, currently zoned suburban residential district. This conditional use permit was originally approved in 2007. It was reviewed again in 2009 and approved for extension. Most recently, it was reviewed in 2011 and approved for extension with 13 conditions. The first condition that was approved is that the home occupation be conducted by members of the family residing on the premises and no more than one additional full-time person. The second condition was that the inhabitants of the residence on the subject property be directly involved in the operation of the home occupation. Staff did perform a site visit to this property on September 4th and verified the structures on the property. However, we did have questions regarding specifically conditions number one and number two. So this item was continued from the September 14th Planning Commission meeting. On September 9th, staff spoke with the applicant, James Norskoff, regarding the conditions of approval. And at that time, Mr. Norskoff had mentioned that since the approval of the conditional use permit, he has never had anyone reside on the subject property and he and his wife have never resided there either. He is not currently conducting business through the greenhouse. He's only using it for personal purposes at this time. However, he hopes to use the greenhouse for commercial purposes again in the future. On September 23rd, staff did attempt to contact Mr. Norskoff again to discuss conditions number one and number two. We were not able to get ahold of him at that time. So at this time, they are in violation of condition number one and number two of the conditional use permit, since they have never had anyone residing on the property for the home occupation. So at this time, staff does recommend to end conditional use permit 0734 as the conditions of approval are not being met and have never been met, according to the conversation with the applicant.
Okay. Thanks, Cassie. Are there any questions? Is the applicant here? Mr. Norskoff? Oh, I guess not. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. How about a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve the staff recommendation to ending conditional use permit 07-34.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to end conditional use permits, CU 0734, per staff's recommendation. Is there further discussion?
If in the future he wants to use it, he can come back and get another one.
Correct.
Anything else? There's a motion on the...
Just a question. What's the difference between ending and revoking?
They're essentially the same thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We, when the past state's attorneys, Patrick Gorty, was here, there was some conversation about that and they asked that we used the word "end" more often and tried to get away from the word "revoke" when possible. "Revoke" had a bad connotation to it, but sometimes it's more appropriate than "end", so.
Don't you realize this is the age of political correctness? We don't want to make anybody mad that is not following our conditions.
So true. Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto item 17.
Item 17 is minor plat PL 1523 and subdivision regulations variance SV 1512 to combine two lots to create lot 10R of Deerfield Park subdivision and to waive plating requirements. The applicant is Michael and Diana Day. The agent is Fisk Land Surveying. The agent is in the audience today. The purpose of this minor plat is to consolidate two lots into one. And the subdivision regulations variance, they are requesting to waive three of the requirements. So for the minor plat, the existing conditions of this are lot 10, they're both zoned low-density residential district. Lot 10 is 3.55 acres. Access is off of Deerfield Park via a platted 66-foot wide access and utility easement. And both of these lots are currently vacant of any structures. Lot 11 is 3.64 acres. So by combining them into lot 10R, they, it will be 7.19 acres. Access will still be off of Deerfield Park Court. And again, it's currently vacant of all structures. So the applicants did submit this request. I did try to go out to the property just to verify the property and the condition of the road and things along those lines. At the time that I went out there, I was not able to get through the locked gate. So I have not seen the property firsthand. However, I did see it when we did some plating for the properties below because these applicants actually do own this property directly south here. So the applicants have also requested to waive three subdivision regulation requirements. The first one is percolation tests and soil profiles. The Pennington County Water Protection Coordinator has stated that profile and percolation information is needed due to very limited soil rating for onsite wastewater treatment systems by the USDA Web Soil Survey. Number two that they want to waive is topography at five-foot contour intervals. Topography information is not necessary for this plat. And number three is roadway improvements. Minor plat PL 1523, as proposed, does decrease density by one lot. Deerfield Park Road and Deerfield Park Court are previously plotted 66-foot wide access and utility easements with a gravel driving surface between 18 and 27 feet. So they, their roadway improvements, I don't believe that they need any at this time. The minor plat and subdivision regulations variances were routed through the interdepartmental review process. The only item of significance that did come up was the comment from the Water Protection Coordinator about the very limited soil ratings. So staff's recommendation for subdivision regulations variance SV 1512, staff recommends approval of two of the subdivision regulations variances to, to waive topography at five-foot contour intervals and roadway improvements. And based on comments from the Pennington County Water Protection Coordinator, staff does recommend denial of the request to waive percolation tests and soil profiles.
Questions for Cassie? Well, let's, let's address the minor plat first. Staff has recommended approval of minor plat PL 1523 with six conditions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Staff would entertain a motion?
Would move approval of minor plat PL 15-23 with the six conditions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve minor plat PL 1523 with the six conditions recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendations for the subdivision regulations variance 1512 from staff include to approve two of the subreg variances, the topography and roadway improvements, but to deny the percolation test and soil profile hole. Is there further discussion on that? Hearing none. Oh, Janelle, would you like to?
Yes, please. Thank you. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying and I'm here on behalf of the Daze. And I would like to request that you support the subdivision variance to waive the requirement for the percolation tests and soil profiles. This is a consolidation plat where we're taking two lots and reducing the density. And typically, it's been our experience, when you're reducing the density, that we receive support on those types of variances. And I would also like to point out, as I think Cassie mentioned, we did a plat just a little bit earlier this summer for the two lots to the south. Both of those, they had actually split a lot and so kind of did a bit of a consolidation there as well. Both of those lots were developed and had homes with septic systems and they were required to provide the current reports stating that the systems were functional and working appropriately. So that would suggest to you, number one, that the soils in the area aren't, you know, possibly as adverse as, as might have been concerned since there's already functional systems operating there. Number two, we're reducing the density. Number three, they're not ready to build at this particular time. And even if you waive the requirement today, it doesn't mean that they don't have to do the percolation tests when they come forward to build. So they still have to do that when they're ready to build, which is, in my mind, the appropriate time for that requirement. Then it's specific to the location, specific to the number of home, or the number of bedrooms and the size of the structure that they're going to do. So my request is that you just amend, amend your approval to include the soil profile and percolation tests. Thank you.
Questions for Janelle? Could you show us, do we have an overhead view? Show us on the lots to the south where the septic systems are? Do you know where they are?
For the, just a little bit north of where the arrow is, the septic system should be just south of the house a little ways. And then for the lot beyond that, I believe that it is just on the east side.
I have a question more for staff than for Janelle. I guess, why the recommendation? I guess, looking at the map, I'm just guessing just by the color and it looks like the relief. It looks like the flatter land tapers off as you get further to the north. So I mean, available to have setbacks and still put a septic system in is probably limited. And I guess, kind of a follow-up or kind of continue of the question. If I recall, part of why that, doing the, identifying a place where this onsite system could be put on was for sale. So I mean, like, somebody bought the lot and intended to build that, they're buying a lot that's, could have a septic system built. And in this case, it sounds like the owner isn't selling, he's buying. But I mean, I know we can't guarantee that they won't turn around and try to sell it too. So anyway, just kind of question on, just a limitation on placing a septic.
Sure. And where I go back to is I go back to the administrative rules. And on 745301, 15, absorption systems shall not be constructed in soils that have severe rating unless it's shown that they're not. So I guess, in our experience in our office with the difficulty that we have finding areas that, we're the ones that usually take the brunt from the homeowners when they get told that they have to put a system in that costs more than what a normal conventional system is. So that's kind of where our stuff comes from, where it's more of an education piece. If it ever does sell, we can't predict that right now, today. I mean, that's what someone's plan is at the moment, but that doesn't mean. But that's basically where our, my comments come from, is because the state requires it as part of their administrative rules. And then when it comes to when we have to go out there, at least we have some working knowledge of what's there. So that was the reason.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Busscaroot.
So, let me get this straight. They're asking for subdivision regulations variance, but that would be just so we can approve the minor plat? I mean, Janelle said, hey, when I come in to build a house there, we're going to have to go through that again. Is that correct?
They do, or they can use the existing information that they did as part of the plating process. If it's, well, it's within two years, but we can grant exceptions if it's going to be in the same area, if it meets the criteria within the 15 feet of the absorption field.
You know, when I, I buy that lot and come in and say, I want to build a house there, you're going to say, yeah, but you have to have a perk test done.
If they don't have...
And I say, no, Janelle said that I don't need it because the lot right south of there is perfect.
Well, we don't know...
But you still have, you still have that final decision on whether to make them do a perk test or not at the time that they get a building permit?
Sure. Yes.
And can I clarify? I did say that they will have to do that when they come for a building permit.
Yeah, I know. That's why I asked the question, because I, I heard you say that and I wanted to make sure that, yeah. Okay.
Yes, Sig.
Well, kind of question maybe for Janelle on this one. Doesn't it help the homeowners identify their budget right now? I mean, if they have to do a $25,000 mound system versus a $5,000, you know, normal septic system? I mean, that would help them budget for their construction purposes, wouldn't it? I mean, that would help them budget for their construction purposes, wouldn't it?
It, it, it's not information that isn't helpful. I'm not saying that. But it depends on when they want to build. Could be next year, could be five years, could be 10 years. We don't know what the requirements will be five or 10 years down the road. We don't know what systems might be available. So in my mind, it becomes premature if they're not ready to actually construct. And I know that there's no guarantee, but the Daze have said that they're interested in keeping the lot. She has a sister that would like to build in the future there. And so, that was their indication that they wanted to, wanted to hold the lot within the family. And I, I, I am, I feel very confident that they would be able to get some type of system, whether it's a mound system or whether it's a traditional system. The easterly portion of that is more meadow area. We did provide a little bit of topographic information. The property on the west side is a little bit more severe in terms of the terrain, and I wouldn't even say severe for the hills, it's just, there's more relief there. But that eastern portion is, is very meadowy area.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
So, what we're really doing is deciding whether, who's going to pay to do the perk test? The guy who owns the property now trying to sell it, or the person who buys it and trying to build a house there? And that's what it's basically about. And, and I know, you can use the, do it at a different time, but, which, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Further questions for Janelle or staff? Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve SV 15-12 with all three variances.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve subdivision regulations variance request SV 1512 to waive topography at five-foot intervals, roadway improvements, and perk test and soil profile holes. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Do, does that, there are four of us?
Yeah, passes four to one.
Okay, passes four to one.
Thank you.
Item 18.
Item 18, conditional use permit 1520 to allow for construction sales equipment on the subject property in general commercial area. On August 26th, the applicant is Mitch Morris. On August 26th, this property was rezoned, part of it, which has the existing contract storage yard was limited, sorry, light industrial. The rest of it was general commercial, has all since been moved to general commercial as a rezone. The comprehensive plan has been changed accordingly. Since that time, the minute that was rezoned, the property came, was in violation, and the applicant submitted a conditional use permit for construction equipment sales on the subject property to bring it into compliance. It's been back and forth trying to get ahold of the applicant. Most recently, we sent a sort of, a letter over to his P.O. box that we have, which has been basically a successful box for us to be in correspondence with him. However, it was sent back with a stamp on it that said the box has recently been closed, and staff had made some recommendations as far as continuing the report. On Friday, the applicant actually contacted the office by phone, said that there was a mistake from the post office, the box next to his was actually closed, they put the sign on the wrong one, so he lost two weeks' worth of mail. In addition to that, he said he was out of the state and out of communication for a while. He said he did call the office a couple times, but we hadn't talked since. We have set up a meeting for this week for staff to meet the applicant, to go out to the property, to see what on the property, and staff, staff's opinion qualifies as construction equipment as opposed to what construction supplies are. The applicant will, when this, when this permit does come up for review, will be asking to allow construction supplies in addition to construction equipment be sold on the subject property. Right now, in general commercial, the conditional use permit is required for construction equipment sales. So, staff recommends conditional use permit 1520 be continued to November 9, 2015, Planning Commission meeting with three conditions.
Thanks, PJ. Are there any questions for him? Do you have pictures of what's on the lot now that's in question?
Well, it's like piping, wood, debris, what could be considered abandoned vehicles. Construction, contractor supplies, while that conditional use permit was in operation, a lot more things were allowed on the property. Now that it was rezoned and with construction equipment, our definition's going to get a little bit more constrained. The applicant would like it a little looser to include supplies. But basically talking about tractors, trailers, concrete, asphalt, I mean, there's just a mess of stuff out there. And I don't mean mess as in a mess, but a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for PJ?
I have a question. So, the conditional, I'm sure that we're seeing the word. So the conditional use permit is going to include sale of construction equipment and supplies?
I can tell you right now, I'm going to recommend denial of the supply portion of it, but I did talk to the applicant and told him that he can come up before you and ask that that be included.
And the reasoning, you do not want the supplies included?
The history of the property.
Okay.
Which is what? What's the history of the property?
Basically, not kept up well.
I see.
And where he's going to a more restrictive, he went to a more restrictive zoning, changed the zoning completely to general commercial, and construction equipment sales is more in line with that, whereas, and supplies could be, but with the history of the property and the considerable difficulty the staff has had over the years with this property, we're looking to clean it up.
I mean, I can see why you don't want, you know, him, you don't want, you know, you want the abandoned vehicles removed and stuff like that, but wouldn't the sale of construction supplies help clean up the property? I am just wondering.
It could. They're already there.
Yeah.
So unless he was to restack them, clean them, make it look better, I don't know what the difference would be.
Okay.
I think probably just leave them in, I don't, I can only speak for him, but he could just leave them in the same spot, not do anything with them, and then be able to sell them.
Okay.
Sig?
PJ, I guess, I guess similar question, I guess. Is he wanting to sell to clear the property, or is it, is there intent to restock it? You know, and start using, you know?
We don't know. It changes.
So we should probably ask him when it's continued?
Right.
What he's, what is intended?
Yes.
Okay.
So, he told you that, what, the dog ate the mayo? Is that?
No, but we're giving him every opportunity.
The applicant is not here. Is there?
And staff, staff talked with him and said that we're just going to continue it. He was in compliance, he was in agreeance with this, so the recommendation he and I had on the phone was, and the conversation was not, to be here today.
Okay. So, the recommendation from staff is to continue this conditional use permit 1520 to the November 9, Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue conditional use permit 1520 to the November 9, 2015, Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion?
I have one question, I guess. I mean, usually we'll continue it, just to continue, to put conditions on the continuance is unusual, correct?
Yeah, we, staff actually had some discussion about that, but we wanted to make sure that we had some leverage if the meeting didn't take place. And this, this staff report was written prior to the applicant calling the office or contacting the office. So we wanted to be able to give us some opportunity so that this wasn't continued continually, 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 continually. Now, the applicant did call, we do have a meeting set up for this week, but I, as staff, I'd like the conditions to stay because that meeting has yet to take place.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
So is it clear to the person making the motion, was it you, Laurie?
Yes.
To include the conditions?
Yep.
Okay.
Because, because you want to meet with him and have adequate time to?
And give him adequate time as well.
Yeah, to get your stuff put together prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, and this application was applied for, in July 23rd.
Yeah, it's been lingering.
Been in process a while. Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of continuing this conditional use permit 1520 to the November 9, Planning Commission meeting with three conditions? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19?
Okay. Item 19 is minor plat 1521. The request is to combine lots in order to create lot one of Whispering Winds subdivision. The applicant is Voorhees Hospitality, or Chuck Voorhees. He is in the audience today if you do have any questions for him. The existing land use of this property is an RV park, cabins, and a campground. As these lots exist today, lot 4A, they're all zoned planned unit development. Lot 4A is 1.11 acres and currently contains the recreational vehicle park. So this is lot 4A up here. Lot D is 1.32 acres. It's currently vacant of any structures. Lot 4B is 0.27 acres. It's also vacant of any structures, but they do use it for tent camping sites. That's this little triangle portion right here. And then, the part of Palmer Gulch Placer, number 690, lot 3, is 1.71 acres. This is the lot that contains all of the structures on the property. It contains a single-family residence with an attached deck and porch, a detached cabin, two attached cabin buildings with restroom facilities, a covered parking structure, a 12-by-20 shed, a picnic shelter, and a 14-by-10 shed. The way that he wants to replat this, he wants to replat all of those four properties into one property. So lot one of Whispering Winds subdivision would still be zoned planned unit development. It would be 4.823 acres. The access would be off of Highway 16 via the existing approach. The, there is a large portion of this property that does lie within the 100-year floodplain. So, with the floodplain, however, I do want to point out that the floodplain, let me see if I can find a map for you of the floodplain. Maybe. Oh my goodness. Okay, so as you can see, this portion, this whole hatched portion right here is in the 100-year floodplain. However, in March of 2009, the previous owners submitted a letter of map change to FEMA to remove the existing structures from the floodplain. I have been in contact with FEMA and also found the revalidation letter. That portion that was taken out of the floodplain was revalidated in 2013, and according to the revalidation letter, that will remain in effect until it is superseded by a revision of the map panel on which the property is located. So, that map amendment took out all, took all of the existing structures out of the floodplain. So now, basically, the floodplain comes back behind all of these structures. All of these existing things on the property are out of the floodplain. So, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Nothing significant came up, just a few things that need to be amended on the plat prior to it being filed with the Register of Deeds, and they also will need to get operating permits for the existing septic systems that are on the property. So staff does recommend approval of minor plat 1521 with 11 conditions.
Thanks, Cassie. Questions?
Question.
Yes, Sig?
I have a question on, on, if I remember, lot 4B, that's the tent area, tenting area, correct?
Um, yes. Lot 4B is the tenting area.
Well, looking at the floodplain, isn't part of, I, I guess, do they restrict tenting out of the floodplain, the part that wasn't removed?
Oh, you mean to have the tents in the floodplain?
Yeah.
Um, no, because it's technically not a structure. We only regulate structures in the flood, like, permanent structures.
We really want tents in the floodplain?
And actually, part of his five-year plan is he's actually proposing to put cabins where he's using the tenting facilities at right now. He's planning to put, and that's his next request, is he's actually amending his planned unit development because he plans to add five cabins into that area. So he will need floodplain development permits for those cabins. He plans to do away with the tenting.
Well, until such time, I guess I would like to see a restriction that tents can't be placed in the floodplain portion. There's part, there's a good part of that lot that it has been removed. But, to me, I mean, some of the historic floods that, Colorado, you know, Rapid City, it's tenters that get hit.
Sure.
So I, I would, I think we should add a condition that the portion of lot 4B that's in the floodplain is restricted from tenting.
Okay, yeah, we could add that to the plat, and we could also add it to their planned unit development amendment that you'll hear next, so that if they do keep the tenting, that it would be restricted to the tents being out of the floodplain.
Are there further questions?
I, I guess I have a question that, do we have the authority to do that? If you're saying we can only regulate structures?
I would believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the authority would come in the conditions that you approve with the, with the planned unit development.
But I guess, you know, do we normally put those kind of conditions on other properties? I wouldn't want to treat this applicant differently than others.
To my, uh.
We probably don't have another situation like this, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think it's a bad idea, I just thought we haven't done it before.
Okay, we don't have another example?
Yeah, but there is an avenue to do it, which would be item number 20.
Would be the condition, okay.
Are there further questions for staff? If not, would the applicant like to come forward?
Yeah.
Can you just introduce yourself and?
My name is Chuck Voorhees. And in regards, I mean, I don't really care about the tents, but we've done elevation work, and we're going to be amending. It appears that those tents are in fact all out of the floodplain zone based on the elevations we've done. We've got to work through that with FEMA, but it does not appear that those will be in the floodplain zone in the future.
Okay, so the cabins that you intend to, intend to build, you've elevated them?
Um, no, we've, we've done elevations on the land.
Oh, okay.
I've had it all surveyed and elevations done. So, not all of that is in the floodplain, or I don't even know if any of that little square that we're talking about is in the floodplain. I don't think so. Or I don't think it will be, based on the elevations that we have done.
Okay, and will you be sending all that data to FEMA to amend the floodplain again?
Yes.
So you're saying there's amendment in addition to the one that's in here, or this isn't the amendment?
That's the current amendment that we have. He's in the process of doing another amendment.
Well, I, I guess it doesn't hurt anything then if you're confident that it's out to, until, you know, we could word it, until such time that it's removed, I guess.
Would you agree with my statement that it doesn't appear that it is in a floodplain zone?
He has submitted, um, maps from his engineering company that does show that the floodplain, let me see if I can.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong map, so.
No, I don't, I don't know that I included them.
Is this the?
The elevations.
Is this the new floodplain map?
That is the map from the letter of map amendment from FEMA.
Okay.
His new, what he's working with, with Burton Engineering, is the new flood zone goes further, it goes behind these buildings the way that it does from FEMA, but then it comes this way. So it would put most of this triangle out of the floodplain.
Oh, okay.
But that's what he's working on right now with doing another letter of map amendment with FEMA.
Okay.
But I just didn't want, I mean, I don't care about the tents, it doesn't generate enough income for me to, but I just don't like any undue restrictions on the property if, if not necessary, I guess.
Well, but I think it could be worded, until such time it's officially removed, the, the restriction's in place.
True, you can do that.
I, I think we have a responsibility to protect the public.
Okay?
Can I say something, though?
Yes.
But Sig, when you look at Exhibit A, and you see, you see where they revised the floodplain, if you, it looks like it continues over to the south and excludes most of lot 4B.
According to?
Well, and that's what I'm saying, most of it is, I agree in most of it, but there's a part that isn't. If, if I'm looking at this other exhibit, maybe that this is a valid exhibit.
I mean, this, it looks to me like this just continues, which means most of lot 4B is excluded from the floodplain. It's just a matter of getting it validated.
Right, it goes about right down the center. I mean, just for, just really loose, but if you look at that, where the tents? if you look at that, where the tent sites are at, the, the line appears to go kind of right down the middle of the property, which the tent sites are out of.
I guess, I mean, are the, you know, the tent has to be here, I guess a lot of tenting areas I've been in, it's basically, you can go anywhere, and where do people set up?
No, they're established, there's five established tent sites, and they're on the far end of the property by the road.
Okay.
It'd be very unlikely that we would put them in.
Well, where these dots are shown, those are the...
Is that where these are? Is that what, is that what we see on this picture?
Yeah, they're right up on that, yeah.
Are these little dots right up in the front?
Yeah, I don't allow anyone, except for in the established sites, yep.
You're not going to have anyone way back here.
No, it's, it's right up at the front.
Okay.
Okay, well, like I said, a lot of tent sites I've been at is, you basically have an area, and a lot of times people throw...
Yeah, you can go where you want.
They, they throw the tent up right next to the stream.
No, I'm very, I like things to be very particular.
And I guess I didn't realize they were set tent sites, and so...
Yes, I have five, and I never allow more.
Well, then I would withdraw my suggestion to put that restriction in then.
Okay.
Since I'm up here, I'll just come and say what I was going to say, in the Pennington County floodplain ordinance, the purpose, item A, the very first thing on the purpose, is to protect human life and health, so you are on the right track.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Any questions for Mr. Voorhees? Okay, staff's recommendation is to approve minor plat PL fifteen twenty-one with eleven conditions.
I'll make a motion for approval of minor plat PL fifteen twenty-one with eleven conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve minor plat PL fifteen twenty-one with eleven conditions, is there further discussion?
Mister, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not so sure that I don't like the, the last motion, with one exception, you know, if we're, we're really talking about liability, is, that's, I think, and, and I wouldn't have a problem with, with Sig's motion if, if you left out officially, you know, if, if we would say, we, we don't want any campsites in the floodplain, period. If he decides that his engineers say his sites aren't in the floodplain, he can do what he wants to, we have made our statement that we don't want that, so if the big flood comes and washes them all away, we have said, it's your problem, it's not ours, we, we don't want, we didn't want them there, but when you go so far as to say officially, then it becomes, it could be years before, how long does it take to get a map revision?
Oh, wow.
That's the difference, so, you know, I don't know if it makes a difference to any, any of you, it did to me, but, you see, is anybody, see what I'm saying, it kind of takes the onus off us a little bit, that we didn't want you to do it, and we said, you know, I, I don't know.
Would you like to make a substitute motion, or would you, Sig?
I think I would, I would make a substitute motion that, that do we put a restriction on there, that no camping within the, what is it, the one-hundred-year floodplain?
No tent camping, right.
If, if his engineers, I'll wait, there's a second, if there is a second.
I'll second.
If his engineers say, your sites aren't in it, okay, then he's met, he's met our restriction, I think. What do you think about that?
I guess I don't care, I, I, I just, I don't like any more restrictions than necessary, but you do what you got to do, it really, even if you told me to get rid of all those tent sites tomorrow, I'm not going to cry.
Don't I do that, you know, if, if that's not necessary, there's no sense in doing that.
So, can I ask a question? So, what you're saying is that you would propose an additional condition that says no tent camping in the floodplain, but not really defining, in the hundred-year floodplain, but not defining whether it's the existing, or to be validated, or, you're just saying hundred-year floodplain?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he can just, his engineers have the ability, should have, to determine what the hundred-year floodplain is, and...
Okay.
I, I don't know if that makes any difference, still liability-wise or not, but hopefully we don't have to worry about it.
Seems to me like a nice compromise.
Okay, the substitute motion on the floor is to approve minor plat PL fifteen twenty-one with eleven conditions, I'm sorry, twelve conditions, the twelfth condition being that no tent camping be allowed in the hundred-year floodplain. It's been seconded, so if there's no further discussion?
Who seconded that?
I did.
Sig did.
Sig did. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We don't have to go back to the original motion, do we? No, okay, we're good. Item twenty.
This isn't, this isn't master plan, I'm using, I had submitted a different master plan.
Okay, sorry, item twenty is a major planned unit development amendment PU fifteen oh four for Mr. Voorhees, if I can get this started. Okay, so with this planned unit development amendment, the applicant has a, a master plan for the property, with this planned unit development amendment, what he's proposing to do is extend some of the uses on the property, add some uses to cover what he has in his five-year master plan. So, some history on the planned unit development right now, the way that it exists, planned unit development PUD or oh four oh six was a request to allow a planned unit development to allow existing cabins to be used for commercial purposes, that was the original PUD on this property. That PUD was approved by the Board of Commissioners in two thousand and four, reviewed in two thousand and six, and approved for extension with eleven conditions. In two thousand and nine, they did a planned unit development amendment to request to amend that PUD to allow for an RV park, tent camping sites, and reduced setbacks. So, that planned unit development amendment oh nine oh three was approved by the Board of Commissioners in two thousand and nine, last reviewed in two thousand and thirteen, and approved with sixteen conditions. So, the applicant is requesting to add five additions to the existing planned unit development, he would like to add five new cabins, one new residence, one new garage, one low-water bridge, and one central pavilion. Now, keep in mind that this is his five-year plan, he doesn't plan to do all this tomorrow. He has indicated that he does plan to abandon one of the septic systems on the property that's currently serving this detached cabin right here, and he's going to be installing a new septic system and drain field. The new septic system will serve this existing detached garage, and then the proposed new surrounding structures, which he does plan, the five new cabins he plans to build along this area right here. And he has stated that he does plan to build two of the new cabins and the central pavilion in the very short term, he would like to get those done this year, in fact, if he can. So, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process as well, nothing significant came back, he will need to do a couple things with addresses and things like that when he has the new, the new structures put up, but staff does recommend approval of major planned unit development amendment PUD fifteen oh four with twenty-five conditions.
Thanks, Cassie, are there questions for Cassie? Would the applicant like to step forward?
Something came to light over the weekend, do you have the, the master plan that has all the, the RVs turning into cabins?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I, I learned that Custer, this is probably maybe not the right place for it, but I have no time, so I apologize, Custer State Park is selling all those little cabins, or a bunch of them, out there, and my wife and I met out there, and they're very near and dear to, to personal reasons, and it looks like they're selling for maybe nothing. And so, I had a five, a ten-year plan of putting, and I don't know if this can be amended to put on there, of putting cabins where the RVs are up there, and that would, but I, I, if you could buy those right, instead of maybe building those two cabins right away, I might just do those six cabins that I have there out of the floodplain, if I could get them purchased right, and I just learned about it this weekend, and I got told tomorrow to bid on them, so I'm sorry to bring this up like this, but...
Cassie, can you show us on the overhead there where they would go?
I don't know if you've got this one on the, should I hand this to them?
Yeah, he has another master plan.
This is the current RV park, and this is just something I was dreaming about ten years down the road, but while I was paying for the architect, and I got to thinking, boy, if you could buy those cabins right, just do that instead of this this year, it would be a lot more economical and a lot more...
Okay, so it would be up where the...
It would be right here.
Where the crosshatch roads are there.
Yeah, this is the current RV park, so rather than having the cabins down here, he would have the cabins up here.
I want to do those cabins down there someday, it's not this year, and I don't know, I don't know if I can get them bought, I don't know if I can get them moved, I don't know a lot of things, but while I'm here, I thought I'd at least ask the question, sorry.
Do you have the liberty to do that without re-advertising?
Essentially, because the way that this was advertised, it wasn't advertised for a specific number of cabins, oh, yes it was, Jerry, would we have to re-advertise this? Since it was advertised as adding five new cabins?
I kind of figured, but would, I mean, but we could at least, I could set them on blocks or something, you know, if you guys didn't think it would be a terrible idea.
Well, and really what you could do too, if you want to do the, these ones, because it just says five new cabins, it's not advertised for where specifically...
So, do five instead of six.
On the property it is, you know, it does, yeah.
Okay.
You could do it at a later date, come in and...
Yeah, and I, I mean, it just, my brother called me, said, did you know you're selling them, and I went up and looked at them, and, and if you could get them, it, it might not be a bad decision to make if you could get them bought, right, and so I, I, after months and months and months of careful planning...
So, how many cabins are you thinking you'll put in total on this lot?
Well, up above, the master plan calls for six, but I don't care if it's five, you know, if you, like, say, if you get them bought for two hundred bucks apiece, which is where they're at in the, in the bidding ends tomorrow, I think I'm crazy not to consider it, especially...
No kidding.
So, I guess that just came to light, but if not, I understand.
Can you show us on the overhead there where all of this new stuff is going to go, I, I couldn't tell where the central pavilion was going to go, and where the new septic was going to be?
The central pavilion is going to take place, the, this is a picnic shelter right now, the central pavilion is going to be right here, and the new septic system, Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be down here.
Yeah, we figured out, we, all the, on this plan here, we kind of figured out the exact distances from the creek, and from the floodplains, and from everywhere, so the septic would be, you know, as, as close to the road, or the property edge as we could get it, and then you would have your road for your setback, and then the cabins would start.
Okay. And the new residence, where will that be?
And that's way down the road, but up on the back, up, right up along the forest up there, there's some area that's not in the floodplain, up there, it would be up there.
Up, that means, is, I was wondering about that eight percent grade restriction.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it looks like there's about enough up there to build a house that would be out of the floodplain, and it would just be really neat, and so I figured while I was going through all the work, it would just be something to work towards, quite a ways down the road, but...
Okay, are there any other questions for Chuck?
Oh, I would just like to make note on the advertising part, when it was advertised, I just noted that he had applied for the planned unit development to amend the existing planned unit development, and then I just put the legal in there, notation and stuff, just to keep the language down for the cost, so it didn't specifically state everything that he was going to do, yeah, it was just on the notices that were sent, that he has to send certified notices, yeah.
Okay, so, can I say, because I was looking at the, I mean, the only condition that really talks about the cabins, it, it just says that each new and existing cabin will be identified with a unique unit number.
Right.
And I don't see a number in the actual amendment we're doing here.
So, it wouldn't matter where I put them, if I, basically, if you guys said, it's okay, and I wanted to build five cabins, I could build them where the RV park is.
Correct, and condition, condition number one does kind of identify the number of things that he can have, and it does in there right now say, let's see here...
Oh, it does say.
Six attached cabins, one duplex...
Six detached.
And six detached rental cabins, so since it wasn't advertised specifically for adding five cabins, that could very easily be changed to say, to allow six more, I mean, we could very easily change that to allow twelve detached rental cabins, because that would still give him his five that he proposes down here, the detached cabin that's already there, and then the six up here.
For a total of twelve.
For a total of twelve, right.
Now, and I'm, I know this isn't the place or the time for all of this, but the, if I built the six cabins, I would want to just use the existing septic instead of running the, you know, because obviously I wouldn't need the new septic on that side, because you'd be getting rid of the RVs.
And that would be determined through building permits, is the applicability of the...
Right, where is the existing septic now?
There, it's kind of on the, where the red line is on the backside of the L-shaped cabin.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, about right, yeah, about right where that arrow is, that's a septic, and then the drain field's out by the road on the, like, right up there.
Right here?
Yep, or in the grass up here, actually.
Right here?
Yeah, that red line isn't right, I don't think...
Yeah, the, the red lines are for entertainment purposes. Okay. So, so, we could then, if we approve this major PUD development amendment, we could amend the first condition to say twelve detached rental cabins.
Correct.
And that would allow you to go to the action?
And I don't, I've got a lot to figure out in a day, but...
Right.
It would be, it would be a neat story, I guess, if we got those, so...
Are there any more questions for Mr. Voorhees? Or for Cassie?
For Cassie.
Yes.
Cassie.
Go ahead, Sig.
I guess the, previous item in discussion on the floodplain, is it, if it's addressed with the minor plat, is that sufficient, or does the PUD need to have some statement, or should it have a similar statement?
If you put it in the plat, I would recommend also putting it in the PUD, because putting it in the PUD makes it a little bit more long-term, I guess, than just having it in the plat, because once he files the plat, then you could technically say that condition got lost with the plat, but if you put it in the PUD, then that will follow the PUD until it's specifically removed, or until it no longer applies.
Okay, so that would be a twenty-first condition?
Please.
Twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, twenty-sixth condition, no tent camping in the floodplain. Discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion.
I would recommend approval of P, uh, major PUD amendment fifteen dash oh four with twenty-six conditions, with the twenty-six being added in, similar statement as we did in the past section, no tenting in the floodplain.
I'll second it, but for discussion, don't we also need to add condition one to change it to twelve detached rental cabins?
Yes.
Okay.
I would agree with that, so...
All right, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve major planned unit development amendment PUD fifteen dash oh four with twenty-six conditions, the twenty-sixth condition reading no tent camping within the hundred-year floodplain, and the first condition be amended to include, instead of six detached rental cabins, twelve detached rental cabins, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, go buy those cabins.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cassie, item twenty-one.
Good morning, item twenty-one is a construction permit review, back in March, you guys had added a condition to this construction permit to revisit it in six months, and so this is a review of that. I've been trying to work with this contractor for several months to bring this site into compliance, I don't believe, staff still does not believe that this site is in compliance, we were out there last week, and there are still several issues, the state actually was out there on Friday, they have some serious concerns about BMPs, there are BMPs in place, they are just not being maintained.
BMP meaning?
Best management practices, they are not being maintained in a... Um, they are not being maintained in a, I mean, these are the sediment traps, they're not being cleaned. Um, when they clean the sediment traps, they put the material next to it without any, um, erosion control around it. Um, so staff feels like we need to continue this, um, until the November meeting. Um, so the state can get involved and try to get this site into compliance.
Thanks, Brittany. Other questions for Brittany? Yes, say.
More of a comment than a question, I guess. When, when we first acted on this, I was excited to kind of see, uh, which I thought would be a really nice tourist addition to the area and things like that. And, and we were told that they were going to do things right and I'm disappointed, I guess.
Yep. Sure, and you are?
I'm Peggy.
Peggy.
I'm Peggy Bussi. Um, my son was going to be here, um, and he just emailed me just a few minutes ago, he's in flight. Uh, but they're being pushed north because of weather.
Your son is Cody Shad?
Andrew Bussi.
Oh, Andrew Bussi, okay.
And he, I believe he's been before you previously. Um, I basically have stepped aside and have been allowing him to take control of this project. He is in the process of moving down, back down from Alaska. And so I do believe that probably within the next few weeks, he's going to be onsite, being able to take control of this and get it properly managed. As he's been out of the area for the last year, um, I know that he's been doing it back and forth, emailing, phone, phone conversations, et cetera. But when he actually has physical presence, I believe that we're going to be able to get this thing taken into control the way it should have been earlier on when he first thought he was going to still be in the area. His job had taken him up to Alaska, like I said, he's coming back. And so we do offer the hope that, uh, his presence here in the area is going to get all of this concern and get it taken care of so that you no longer have to be concerned and worried about this. Because he, he's working very diligently with a lot of the different business owners in the area to promote his original idea. And there are very, very many people that are looking and offering different ideas and suggestions and possibly partnerships with him. So it, there are other things happening besides just the construction side of this.
Question?
I appreciate that, I guess, I, you know, you're clarifying my comment, I assume, but, um, I, I said, I, you know, I thought it was a great addition to.
And I believe it still will be.
And so.
So it's just taken us a little longer than what we first had anticipated.
I look forward to it and hope you're correct that he controls it, so.
If I could just make, um, when Andrew has been in contact with me and he has been very communicative with me, um, his contractor has assured him of things that have not happened. So there's, you know, it's not on a lack of effort by Andrew's part, so let me qualify by saying that. Um, if that was the, um, impression, that's not, um, but I have been in contact with Andrew. I try to, you know, update him when I go out there and things like that. So with him not being here, he's kind of relying on like a three-way type of situation.
So Cody Shad is the contractor?
Correct.
Okay, well, and I get. And he is the owner.
This, this is, was my question too, Karen, because the applicant is the contractor, not the owner, and I.
Well, and I guess I'd like to note that when you're doing this kind of construction for the stormwater and stuff, the contractor is the applicant, right?
In some cases, yes. Um, the person that sizes the NOI and that is ultimately responsible is the landowner.
Is the landowner, but I mean, you know, he's, like you said, he's trusting the contractor to perform these duties and it sounds like they're not getting done.
Correct, and, you know, in, in this case too, all of our correspondence get sent to both.
Mm-hmm. Good plan.
So.
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Shad has ever come to one of these meetings about this particular project, yeah.
And we will be taking care of that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bussi, I appreciate it.
I'm recommending to continue it till November ninth, the November ninth Planning Commission meeting. I don't believe that the first meeting in October will give them enough time. The second meeting in October, I won't be here, um, I'll be out. So that should give them enough time to get things in order.
Things in Kate plans. Okay, staff recommendation is to continue construction permit fifteen oh one to the November ninth Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue this construction permit CP fifteen dash oh one to November ninth Planning Commission meeting, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item, it's a long agenda, uh, twenty-two. Discussion of definition of transfer. Vacation Home Rental Committee.
This was brought up at the last Planning Commission meeting. Uh, essentially the Vacation Home Rental Committee, um, and there are several of them, well, some of them in the audience today, um, with the help of the state's attorney's office, came up with a new definition of transfer. And they just wanted the Planning Commission's opinion on it before they moved any further. In addition to that, um, after you would take a look at it, then it would go before the Board of Commissioners also for their opinion and then they would take those, um, comments and move forward. They are moving forward very rapidly now, last few meetings have been a lot of changes. So we could have a discussion, no discussion, no changes.
Anybody want to comment? Anyone from the committee?
Yeah, I've got it, I've got a comment. This makes the VHR different from any other property. For example, if we had a home occupation, that would not be transferred. You know, a home business occupation. And, and VHR then becomes different from any other CUP and gets singled out for special treatment.
We do have, she is correct, there are conditions of approval or permitted conditions require conditional use permits in every zoning district. There are not specific ordinances for every single one, there are for specific ones. Vacation Home Rental being one, home occupation and guest houses, so they are treated separately.
And on the other two that you mentioned, the app, app, a new owner would have to reapply, isn't that correct?
No, only in Vacation Home Rentals is that restriction put in. Usually a conditional use permit goes with the property, not with the owner. Vacation Home Rentals are treated differently right now.
So for instance, if someone built a greenhouse on the property and has a conditional use permit for a home occupation, such as the one we had today, that CUP home occupation would transfer with sale of the property?
Correct, and recently this board, this body has put in restrictions with one close to rapid where once the, the owner sold or transferred the property, his home occupation would end. That was actually a condition that was put into the CUP.
When was that?
Trying to remember the gentleman's name, I can't at this time.
It was a greenhouse?
No, it was a use of a detached garage on a separate, what was it?
Oh, it was the one, yeah, it was the one south of forty-four by the, yeah.
Sick.
Very close to the greenhouse, yeah.
Normally CUPs go, but that was one of the restrictions that was put in.
Right.
So that you guys would vote in favor of it and that was offered up by the applicant.
Okay. Can I, can I ask, and you're saying with the guest house also, the guest house, um, that used transfers with the property on sale?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
By lawful marriage, does that, does that, uh, used in convey, in the term conveyance or spouse? So is it saying, shall not be defined to include the grant or conveyance to the other spouse by, by them being married? Or does it mean conveyance of the spouse to another, from one spouse to another one who is lawfully married to that person? See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. And I'll ask the author to come up and talk about the intent.
I mean, it, it, to me, it means, it could mean either one of those.
Kinsley Grove with the state's attorney's office. Okay, um, it, it was just meant to be somebody married to another person by lawful marriage. But what are the two different interpretations that you're?
Well, then I would change, I would change it to say from one spouse to their, I don't know, but I, I, I think the by lawful marriage is not in the right spot, place. That's my opinion. And that's what you meant, I'm sure.
Charlie's coming up.
Okay.
Who's Chair of the Vacation Home Rental Committee.
Charlie Johnson.
Good seeing you again.
What we meant was from one spouse to another, whether it was through divorce or, uh, an understanding in the marriage. However, we haven't submitted any of our writings through the legal process yet, which we will do before they come back to you and before they come back to your level of the commission.
And I agree, I think, with what you're trying to do. I'm just not a hundred percent sure that you're saying that, but.
And while I'm here to take the heat off of PJ on it, the truth was, I think they felt this needed to come before your body because there was quite a bit of time put in the, the definition that exists right now and a lot of heartache. Uh, so if we were going to change it, we felt we were really bumping into, uh, the, the existing structure and maybe ought to know ahead. Everything else we've done, we haven't run ahead on, probably you won't see it until it's done. Any other questions while I'm here?
I'm just still not clear what Ron's point is. Can you explain a little?
Well.
I mean, just do it again.
See, I think it should say conveyance of an ownership interest in the VHR property from one spouse to their respective spouse to whom they are lawfully married.
Sure, probably does take a little bit of the fluff out of there.
I, I don't know, I, that's just something to think about, Charlie, when you guys meet.
To whom?
Let's just write that down, we're, we meet on Wednesday and certainly we're going to carry what any of your thoughts back to.
You know, that's how attorneys, uh, I'll get rich by arguing about what the words mean.
So really, the only thing that's changing though is with a, a married couple. I, I mean, everybody else still has to go through the transfer process, correct? Isn't that the intent?
Right, everybody but married couples.
You're just excluding that from this, uh, process.
Correct, they're the only ones that are excluded as, to people that are married. And you could probably even take out by lawful marriage. You could probably just leave it one spouse to their respective spouse because it's implied that there, you can only be a spouse if you're legally married. So to clarify, that could even probably come out, so.
Yeah, I'll charge a half hour to, time to these people. You charge a half hour to the state's attorney's office.
Okay, thanks for that.
And as Charlie had mentioned before, this is, you still has to, it still has to come before you, it still has a long way to go yet.
Okay, are there any other comments about this definition? Do we need to move approval or?
Just for information.
Just for information, I'll take it back.
Okay. Uh, onto item twenty-three.
Uh, the Board of Commissioners will hear the September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen Planning Commission recommendation at the, at the October sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting.
Okay, uh, item twenty-four. Items from the public. Do we, you VHR people, you're our only public? Do you have any more, any more items? Uh, items from staff. PJ, we'd like to introduce our new employees.
Absolutely. Um, after a few weeks and many, many interviews, uh, we've hired a new ordinance enforcement officer and a new planner one. And I'll let them introduce themselves and speak with you. And they will be, uh, introduced at the second meeting of the month for the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Cool, okay.
Hi, uh, I'm your new ordinance enforcement officer. I'm, uh, Michael King. Give you some background on me, uh, twenty-five years of law enforcement experience, uh, state of Florida. Uh, ten years highway patrol, fifteen years gaming fish. On top of that, basically, uh, United States Navy Chief Petty Officer, did two tours. Uh, and that's, I'm married, got two grandchildren, beautiful girls, um, son and daughter. Life is good and I'm glad to be here.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for me or?
Well, being from Florida, you, well, we're looking forward to you saying you're glad to be here, it's the middle of January.
Yeah.
I can do that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Chuti Ma Sabun. I am a planner one here and I'm originally from Thailand. However, I've been in the US for over ten years now. I got a degree from Northern Illinois University, so I was there for at least eight years over there. And I moved here and I consider here as a home now. So I'm excited to be here and work here also.
Great, welcome, Chuti, it's great to have you. Could you say your name again?
Chuti Ma.
Chuti.
Chu-T, like C-H-U-T-I-M-A.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a new calendar.
I'll get caught up on my agenda here. Okay, so, uh, before you, the next item is, uh, twenty-five B, December meetings. Um, if you recall, just a little history, uh, last year, uh, and it's traditionally, there's usually been one Planning Commission meeting every December. Last year, there was some conditional use permits came up for single wide mobile homes that when the applicant applied, they missed a deadline to be on a Planning Commission meeting and to be able to get people into their homes in the winter and in before the holidays. Uh, it was decided that it would be heard before the Board of Commissioners. And, um, everything went well with that, but we decided, um, to fix that problem so it wouldn't happen again. And we discussed having two meetings in December. So right now, the meeting, um, is scheduled for December fourteenth. Um, we're asking to change, and we've talked about this before, have a meeting on December seventh, starting at, um, nine, and then have another meeting on December twenty-first, which would start sometime after one o'clock, depending on whenever you would like to, we still have time to decide on the time. The reason we're doing that is the treasurer possibly have some hearings in there for some tax items.
On the twenty-first?
Twenty-first, that is correct.
Okay, so that'll, that'll be at one.
Be after one at least.
Okay.
She may not have them at all, but we're just giving ourselves a little cushion. She said she'll be done by noon, but just giving ourselves some time.
Okay.
Is this calendar published on the website?
It is not, not right now.
Okay.
The one you have in front of you is actually for another item, but we, you can use the one you have.
So it should be corrected before it goes on the website to the one o'clock instead of nine?
Yeah. And we can take that off or time to be decided, or if you could come up with a time now.
One is fine, can you guys do one o'clock? You won't be here, will you? No, it'll be.
I'll make a motion because I'm not going to be here.
Okay, so you move one o'clock?
I, I'll, I'll not. You guys decide that.
Does one work for everybody? Of course, we don't have Bill and Jim.
Does that need a motion at this point in time?
I don't think it does, does it?
The change of calendar? We'd never get a motion for it in the first place, no.
Okay. Well, let's tentatively go with one o'clock unless there are significant conflicts from Jim and Bill. How about that?
Yeah.
Okay, VH Rental Committee.
Twenty-five C, Vacation Home Rental Committee, HOA information for some, uh, HOA homeowners association. It was discussed by this board last time that you'd like, uh, homeowners associations to be informed of what was going on with the Vacation Home Rental Committee because it may impact them. Went over and talked to some, um, heads of other departments and they, um, where I could find a list of all the HOAs in the area and they said impossible. Needle in the haystack. The recommendation was basically advertise it a couple times in a newspaper or three times. Just let them know that the, that the meetings are going on and that changes are occurring. Specifically what verbiage in the advertisement, we don't know, but that was the recommendation.
Okay, well, we'll do that then.
Okay, and then I'll bring that before the Vacational Rental Committee on Wednesday.
Now, when I brought it up, I was kind of figuring that it's impossible list to get.
It, yeah, and it's a great idea, it just, yeah, that list.
Have them don't even meet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it seems to me it would be a good idea to develop such a list. I mean, it may take a long period of time and happen over time, but that's important information.
I, I just think like a homeowners association may react to it where legal notices get overlooked all the time, you know. But I, I, like I said, I realize that's probably an impossible list to get too. Uh, you know, you may know of some, but you'll never hit all of them, there's no registry.
Could we instead call the Journal and, um, Gavin, you know, tell them that there's controversy and that perhaps the. and that perhaps the public might be interested in this? God knows if they would run it or not, it being the journal.
And I can bring that up before the committee and see what they want to say. No one's walking up here, so I just didn't have a comment. Um, or also, as the committee comes to their final decisions, before their recommendations are brought here, there could be one final, maybe public meeting with the, with the committee. So a lot of options out there.
Yeah. It would be useful to have that information out in the public.
Feel daggers in the back of my head though, right now.
Because not very many people read the public notices, sadly. Any more comments on that? Okay, submittal application dates, twenty-five D.
Submittal application dates is a request by the staff and, um, and information to you as well. Uh, we're looking to move our submittal dates one week prior. The calendars you have before you are the proposed calendars. And if you look at, uh, December ninth, for example, it's RZN rezone, PL is for plat, and DL is deadline. So the Planning Commission, if a item came in on the ninth, the proposal would be that it would be heard before the Planning Commission on January eleventh and go to County Board on January nineteenth. Right now, that submittal date is actually, as it exists today, the sixteenth. We're basically moving every one of our submittal dates back one month to allow staff and the applicants more time to gather information and to communicate so we can cut down on the amount of continued items through, um, limited staff, staff time, and/or in activity on the applicant's part. I've talked to at least two, um, people who regularly submit items through our office, and they, uh, are both in favor of this.
Did you say one month or one week?
One.
One week. So what's, what you see on the ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth, all, as they exist now, we're actually one week. The ninth was actually the sixteenth, sixteenth was actually the twenty-third, twenty-third was actually the thirtieth, and we're just bumping everything up to give additional time.
Does, does that mean the reports get sent to the affected applicant earlier? Because we've heard some.
There's a lot of positive things that we're hoping to come out of this, yes. Get them to you guys earlier.
You know, they just found out on Friday or Saturday or something like that, and there's no opportunity before the meeting on Monday.
And right now, sometimes, uh, items come back after the inter, interdepartmental review, which completely change a report, and we have very little to no time to change the report or act on it in addition to all the other reports we're working on at the same time and the meetings and.
Seems like a good plan. Okay. Anything else, PJ, from you guys?
No. So that will take effect, um, New Year. It will adjust the December calendar and then everything for twenty sixteen because there are deadlines for twenty sixteen and December twenty fifteen.
Okay. Items for membership? Again, I have to say, you guys did a great job. I mean, this is a really long agenda, and there were very few questions, almost no controversy. I mean, that says to me that you guys are really well-prepared.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything otherwise? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Did, did anyone, did you guys already talk about this? Did you go to the planning conference, or is that still coming up?
It's coming up in late October.
Okay. I just wondered if I missed it, okay.
Oh, I will not be here next time, so Sig will be running the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, we are done. Thank you.